All right. We are now reconvened in open session. We will now consider action on closed session items. Mrs. Tossan.
Yes, Mr. Burdine. I move that the board approve and authorize the superintendent to execute the mediated settlement agreement and TEA docket number zero nine eight dash DM dash zero five one eight as presented.
A second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Tossan and a second by Mrs. Heliger. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote by show of hands. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have review items. First up is board governance. Review matters related to the proposed November two thousand eighteen bond election. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, sir. I think Oscar and Steve's probably going to lead off on this side of it. We have three different topics related to the eighteen bond election we're going to kind of cover in one broad discussion. So I'll turn it over to our CFO, Steve Bassett.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Dupree. So we are coming up with our capital plan. So before we, before we get into the recommendation and to get into the details, we want to give a little bit of historical perspective as to where we've, where we've been because this has a lot to do with, with the amounts that we're, that we're talking about and going to be recommending. So to remind everybody that the, a bond failed in May two thousand and three. Okay, this last time we had a failed bond election. And then revisions were made and then it passed that November two thousand and three. We had a successful election in two thousand and seven, but then it was followed by a significant downturn, downturn in the economy that was, the growth slowed in terms of the number of students that were being expected. Some of the projects got put off. A lot of time passed between two thousand and seven and twenty thirteen when the capital plan was created. Additionally, there was a lot of turnover among district administration and also within the Board of Trustees as well. So after Dr. Dupree got here, he, he got started quickly on a capital plan the year he got here in twenty thirteen, and a lot of work was done. And at that time, a billion dollars in needs were identified. Okay? But it was a consensus of administration, I think the board at the time, and then also the bond oversight committee and a lot of the feedback we got from folks that we, we needed to cut that down significantly, try to keep it under five hundred million, and also with the goal of not having a tax rate increase, with the goal to work to restore trust between the community, the board, and administration. And so we really feel like we've done that with everything in Bond two thousand and fourteen because there's only one major project that'll linger after, after this fall, and that's the, the CT Center for reasons we spoke about in here. And so we've really worked hard and been able to not have a tax rate increase. And, and so things, things are going well with regard to Bond two thousand and fourteen. So here we're, we're sticking with the, the recommendation we've had after the last meeting we had with you and then also with the bond oversight committee the other day to recommend to call an election this November for nine hundred and ninety-two point six million. There is just a rounding issue that we had, so we have to, we have to fix the agenda item next week. I apologize for that. The agenda item that you have has ninety-nine, nine ninety-nine, two point five. So we're off a hundred thousand, but we'll fix that before action's taken next week. The projected tax rate for this would be a dollar thirty-five, which would be three pennies higher than the current tax rate of a dollar thirty-two and one penny higher than in two, in twenty sixteen when we had, last had the rate at a dollar thirty-two, dollar thirty-four before the, the tax rate drop and swap. There's a slide later that you'll, that you'll see the timing of when we expect the tax rate to change. Again, this is a three-year plan with, with phase two election expected in twenty twenty-one. So just to touch on briefly why we feel this plan is essential to the success of the district, it does support the profile of graduate. There's issues we address in here with safety and security. We work to address the updated education specifications by level for elementary, middle, and high, and we're working to modernize their technology. And, you know, a lot of folks, whenever they see this presentation for the first time, they're surprised to see that the average age of our facilities is twenty-five years. A lot of folks don't think of us as having a lot of buildings that old. And we can show that we've under-invested in those facilities over the years. And of course, we still have a lot of enrollment growth that we have to address. So that's, that's why this plan is essential. So with regard to profile of graduate, we're just trying to make sure that, that we're supporting the profile so that our students can graduate with skills equipped for life, the servant leader, all of these really great attributes that are needed for, for our graduates. And so it's really all of our work is around the profile of graduate. So with that, I'll turn it over to Oscar, and then I'll get into the finances after he speaks.
Thank you, Steve. So if you recall, and it's been a few months back, we came to y'all with the original capital plan. And so what this slide is basically showing is that from the first time to now, the only thing that is, that has changed within this is that we've gone in, we've cleaned up, you know, making sure that we, if something was covered through Bond two thousand and fourteen, we're not doing that work here again. Or if it's, you know, something that was, as in the case of Meadows or Lakeview, where we had it in lifecycle deficiency, but we also were, you know, thinking that we may go ahead and replace it once we knew we were replacing the schools, then we went back and we cleaned all of that information out of the lifecycle deficiency. So with, with that being said, as we went through all of it, then the overall number, when we came the first time, it was one point seven five, and we, at this point, the capital plan is one point six nine. But from here on out, what we're going to be talking about is literally just phase one and, and what we're planning on doing in the first three years of this capital plan. So the, this slide and, and the ones to follow kind of illustrate where, where the bond dollars really fall. And so new construction, rebuilds and additions is the largest number that we have, and that's attributed to the growth that we're experiencing. And so it, it includes the three new elementaries. It includes the design of a middle school, construction of one high school campus, and then rebuild of Lakeview and Meadows, and then additions at Neal and Madden. And if you recall, in this particular case, we, the, the elementary that we're looking at in the Riverstone area, if land doesn't materialize, then that becomes three additions, which I'm not showing here, but it's, it's budgeted within that. And then we also were asked to look at, you know, the core, and, and so we've budgeted, you know, for the core on these. Now, obviously, it wouldn't be until we bring an architect onboard, we actually look at the, the program and the scope, and then we would make a decision on, you know, how that is sized and what the scope of that is. The remainder here, you can see on the structural restroom renovations, we have sixty, almost sixty-five million. Fine arts, you know, sixty-eight million. Athletics, forty-nine million. And those are, these are needs. These are not, we're not going out there and, you know, rebuilding, you know, stadium or anything. These are literally going in and correcting items that need to be corrected so that our athletics and our fine arts spaces will function as they should. And, and the case of the fine arts, we're also, as you heard earlier, we're looking at the inadequacy, and so where required, we would go ahead and put an expansion or, you know, whatever is, is needed in that. Once again, the finals to be determined once we bring architects and get them onboard and, and get it all scoped out. Going further down, we have the site drainage, electrical gear and distribution, water heater, drinking fountain, site paving. And in this particular category, for the most part, other than the drinking fountains, all of that is going to, you know, go in, into areas that it's hard for people to visualize, but it's, it's necessary. We've had failures, just in the, in the three years I've been here, we've had some failures. And I, I understand before I got here, there was some failures, especially in the electrical distribution system. And when that happens, you know, you run into emergency situations. It affects the learning environment, and so what we're trying to do here is based on lifecycle, we're trying to get ahead of that, get it taken care of. We have almost twenty million for future site acquisitions. We have eighteen million, and there's, there's two categories here because there's, this particular eighteen million is what's included in the work that would happen within our scope, and that is intrusion alarms, firearm systems, sprinkler systems, those type of updates. You'll see other security items that are more in the life safety side outside of this, but, but it, wanted to make sure that that number was brought to our attention because there's, there's been some concern that, you know, they're saying, well, the, the actual security number is kind of low, but it's broken out and, and the total is over thirty million, but eighteen of it is in this side. We also have kitchen renovations and expansions that will be happening at the older schools, the, the ones that just cannot really support the feeding programs that the schools moving forward. We need to get those taken care of, and so that's included in this. And then this is the other portion, the fourteen-nine, that you've seen before, and this particular one does carry the special ed cameras, door locks, windows, fencing, and this is, you know, the fencing that we've spoken around, you know, T-b buildings and the playground areas. There's FFNE, the FFNE dollars are to go ahead and look at our older schools, those in the, with the largest need, and try to do something that we feel is very cost beneficial to make an impact. You know, we spoke earlier about the, the fact that some of these classrooms are seven hundred square foot while new schools are eight hundred. This, by, by going with an FFNE package, we can go ahead and make an impact. And, you know, we feel that will definitely be enjoyed by, by the students and the teachers, and will definitely make a difference as we move forward with our, our learning process. And then the, the final is a five million program contingency. We presented last week to the bond oversight committee, and they, they did have some concern about the five billion. They felt that it was low for a bond of this size. We understand that, but as I told them before, we, you know, we started the last one with, without contingency. You know, I feel comfortable with five million, and I feel comfortable that we have priced this, and, you know, we have the right dollars in there, that we, we should be really doing well moving forward once this bond passes. This particular slide just shows what, once again, from here on out, we're talking about phase one. And I've, I've kind of gone over this. The main change on this was last time, if you recall, we were talking about, we had areas A, B, and C, and so we've kind of changed that to say, okay, this is, this is where this is happening, you know, either by naming or the southeast portion, you know, or the actual campus. So that's really the, the change here. There hadn't been any change in the dollar amount. On the safety and security detail, the same thing. Nothing has changed here. This is the same that we presented to you last time, but we're, we're only talking about phase one at this point. And this particular one, I'm going to let the chief kind of speak to this because this is an area that he'll be presenting to y'all, I believe it's next week.
Yes, sir. So actually, next week, what I'm going to talk to you about is the Safety Advisory Committee survey results. And so we'll go into all those at that time and talk about what's been recommended by the Safety Advisory Committee. But on the non-bond related, there's an operations center, which we've talked about, that we, we would need if a, a, a number of the, the survey results would funnel into one operations center. So that's a, that's a, that's a project that would not be bond-related. The Threat Management Program is one of our proactive preventative projects that we want to kick off, and we've already started working on that from a campus level with the ability to scale up and expand to the, to the district level and have district teams. But that, you know, is mostly a personnel issue, so that's not bond-related. The Incident Reporting Platform for Students, again, that's the mobile app, allowing students, staff, visitors to be able to report things that make them feel uncomfortable. All those reports would go back to that operations center and be vetted there. Facial recognition software is, is an option that's, that's on the table. And again, those alerts would go back to the operations center, training for students and staff. We've actually already started working with local police departments to identify the craze trainers, the civilian response to active shooter events. And three of our officers, including myself, will be trained during the second week of school. And we actually already have, Dulles High School has already asked us to present that to the parents in February. So we're already scheduled, and we haven't even been trained for it yet, so pretty excited about that. The school marshal program is also something that the, that the Advisory Committee said they would like to see us add to our safety and security master plan. That's, that's not a bond item. And then the additional police officer positions.
And so just moving forward, the, the next few slides, once again, are just to show that, you know, we're, we're only talking phase one, but to show that what the, the need is, if we look at, you know, both phases, but we're concentrated on, on phase one, three hundred and ten million of current lifecycle and eighty-five in inadequacy. This is another way to look at all of phase one and, and kind of where it falls, and that pretty much the breakdown that I showed you earlier is this information right here, just looking at it in a different manner. The inadequacy, it's, it's important to, to note that the phase one includes eighty-five million, and there's a lot more that's needed. But, you know, at this point, this is what we feel comfortable that we could go ahead and bring forward and, and accomplish within the phase one of this bond. We, we also are looking at exterior LED lighting upgrades. We're looking at solar initiatives and possibility of some HVAC systems. And, and we want to look at a proposed performance contracting model on this and see if it is to our advantage to be able to go ahead and, you know, leverage some dollars that would relieve. I know I've been working with Steve because we, we totally understand that, you know, the, the best way to go is to, to go ahead and finance it through a bond. But we also understand that these are some areas where we can, you know, bring some relief and we can go ahead and pay from savings, you know, on this. So if it makes sense, then we would be bringing those, you know, back to y'all for consideration. The other areas, we were, we'd been questioned about how we were estimating this particular bond. So our, our cost per square foot for elementary is two thirty-seven, middle is two fifty, and our high schools are two sixty-five. And that has, you know, we're, we're projecting those out to the time that they would bid, so it, it has that built in. Then we also looked at cost comparison data on, you know, our neighboring districts and, you know, where their projects have come in, and these are projects that have bid within the last thirty-six months. And so kind of to give us an, an idea of where, where we are. And we presented this, once again, to the bond oversight committee, and they were very positive on the, you know, the way that this, this has been projected.
Thank you, Oscar. So I mentioned the enrollment growth. So this is just a reminder of, of our expected enrollment growth through twenty-seven, twenty-eight. That's when we expect the district to be built out from a, doesn't mean the populations won't shift, but with regard to new homes and such, we expect the district to be built out by, toward the end of the, that, no, it's not a century, that next decade, excuse me. So, so anyway, but you can see that the, the bond, the bond is supporting, you know, elementary fifty-two, fifty-three. It's also designed for, for middle school six, middle school sixteen, and then the high school, and the high school takes quite a bit of time to, to construct. And so we're addressing a lot of this with, with the bond. You saw this slide last time, and I apologize for the busyness, but, but really what the point of this is to just remind everybody how we feel like we've, we've under-invested since we, you know, went through the history. We feel like we, we missed a bond cycle between two thousand and seven and twenty-fourteen. And if you look at the sequence of bonds, you know, by districts, you know, a lot of them that we consider to be our peers, we, we definitely have under-invested, especially if you, you compare us to Acady and Cyfair. They've, they've both been over a billion dollars more than us during that time, and we know they have upcoming bonds planned. So just to remind everybody about the, the tax rate comparison as to where we are, you know, we, we would be looking at a dollar thirty-five by the, by the time that we'd be, you know, done with this financing, needing to go up that high, but that still compares favorably with our, with our peer districts. And then also, I just wanted to remind folks about where we were with some of the other benchmarking that we've talked about with outstanding principal and principal per student and principal as a percent of taxable value look, you know, really good on a statewide basis, but then also within the, the area itself. So this is just looking at the bond principal outstanding. Right now, we're at nine hundred and sixty-three million. We're projecting with this bond authorization into twenty twenty-five, where we'd be spending out on the high school that we think our, our outstanding debt at that time would be over one point five billion. We wouldn't just be adding a billion dollars to our outstanding debt. I mean, we're going to be paying off debt as we go. And so just to remind folks how we got to the nine hundred and sixty-three million after we had the, the authorization for the twenty-fourteen bond. At that time, our outstanding balance at the end of twenty-fourteen was eight hundred and forty-four million. We've been making principal payments. We've had the refundings of, the refinancing of the callable debt that we've been able to do. We also had some early payoff of debt in there. And then you can see we've issued three hundred and thirty-three million in new debt during that time. And so that's our, that's our outstanding balance as of the end of June, nine hundred and sixty-three million. So we're always working to, you know, to pay off the debt as we go. So projecting what our bond principal per student could look like, using that, those same assumptions, we think we'd be just over nineteen thousand per student. You can see we're at the, we're at the bottom of this chart right now. So the others, again, they're going to be issuing new debt. All these are, these others are growing districts, so it'll be interesting to see where they go in the future, but we, we like our number. One thing on here is, I think if you, the one district right next to us, Humble, remember where Humble is on this chart, because I'm going to show you one of their numbers that I think that they've also under-invested, and I'll, I'll show you why I think that here in a minute. If you look at our bond principal outstanding as a percent of taxable value, we think, you know, if we were at one point five, using the, one point five billion, using the projections of five percent growth, we do think we would go just over three percent, three point two percent in terms of principal outstanding as a percent of taxable value. So that is close to that three percent benchmark. So just to remind folks, some of the reasons why these items are in the, in this bond, you know, when you talk about technology, you talk about vehicles, you talk about some other things, that folks may say, why are you including these in a bond? We've had very little overall annual growth in our revenue per student. So these are general fund numbers. Our, if you look at our inflation-adjusted revenue per student back since two thousand and seven oh eight, that year, our revenue per student has gone up less than half a percent. You know, so that is why, and, and other times where we've had financial briefings, you've seen the pressure that we've had on the general fund. And so that's a, that's a, you know, whole other topic, and we'll, we'll, we'll give you an update on the general fund and how that's going in September when we have a, when we bring a budget amendment to you, as we usually do in September. So that's the revenue side. If you, if you think about the expense side, the biggest part of expenses is FTEs, and everybody always questions, you know, the FTEs that we have that are in, in central administration, you know, to do the support for district operations. And so these are the FTEs for curriculum writing and, and school, district leadership for instruction, and then also the, the central office for finance and HR, communications and strategic planning, and then also technology. And all of those FTEs are supporting a hundred, what's that number there? A hundred and ninety-four students per FTE. So the only one of the top ten districts size-wise in the state that's more efficient in that regard is Cyfair. You can see our number compares well to, to the other districts in the, in the top ten peer group. So one other, this is a new, new slide for you. If you think about under-investing, one, one way under-investing would manifest itself is how much you're spending on the general fund side to maintain the buildings, you know, the facilities maintenance, Function Fifty-One. And so if you look at that spending per student, we're at five hundred and ninety-three million. If you look at Humble, all the way over on the right, they're quite a bit above us, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per student. And so I think, you know, looking at that, I think they've probably under, under-invested as well. I haven't looked at their finances in depth, but I do know that we're, we're above our friends at Acady and Cyfair when it comes to this mark, and we could certainly use a hundred dollars per student in other areas, you know, that, rather have that instruct, in instruction than in, within facilities and maintenance. So just to remind folks about how we finance the plan and how we take a look at the useful life of the assets. This is how we, this is how we categorize things that we financed in the past. And, and so far with Bond two thousand and fourteen, the weighted average maturity of our debt is, is still well below the average useful life of the assets that we're, that we're financing. And so, you know, there's going to be a, a, a board resolution, accountability resolution that, that you're, we're hoping that you adopt, that we'll talk about a little bit later. That's also an agenda item, and so the same kind of language is in that, is in that agenda item that we had in twenty fourteen. So you've, you've seen this slide, and so the one thing that, that we did add to this in looking at the, the tax rate scenario assumptions, you know, of course, you have the interest rate range, you know, from four point five to six. We haven't seen anything that would cause us to change that, and we're looking at things on a level debt service and a deferred debt service. But, but also at the very end, you can see that, and we talked about having no tax rate increase for Bond two thousand and fourteen, and we were able to deliver on that. And in fact, we were actually able to reduce it by four pennies. And so, so that kind of correlated with what was talked about in two thousand and seven, although I wasn't here at the time. Now, we do have some good news on the assessed value. We originally had been projecting three percent, three percent growth, and so after the certified values came in, just late, late in July, so this is new data since our last, last time we met, we're at three point eight percent. So that's above the three. So even with Hurricane Harvey, you know, I feel pretty good about the, the five percent assumptions that we're going to be making, that we've made to make this tax rate projection. And also, just, this does impact the general fund, which will impact the, the budget amendment that we'll bring. And just, I, I didn't hit my mic quick enough after Chief was talking before, but one of the things that we're going to look at addressing quickly on his plan is the additional officers. Okay, you know, so that's not something that, you know, it's not a rocket scientist figure out how to implement that. I mean, we just know we need to hire folks, and we need to get those into, into the budget that we'll bring to you in September. So that'll, that'll be one thing that we could look at very quickly. So looking at the summary of debt with remaining issues, so this was a view, and this is, you know, what we're using to, to make our projections. With five percent property value growth, you can see the, the line of current collections at twenty-six pennies and how that compares to collections with twenty-nine pennies. So you can see that three percent change. And so we wouldn't need those pennies right away, and you'll see, you'll see the timing of those here in a minute. If things get better, you know, so what this, what this graph doesn't show, this graph doesn't show the value of variable rate debt issuances. It doesn't show the value of the refundings that we're going to have, and so what we're going to work to do is to have as little deferment as possible. I mean, we don't necessarily want to defer our debt. Now, and that's one of the reasons why we have an excellent debt profile. So what we're going to do is just try to, try to do our best to manage the, the, the overall tax rate the best we can. So this is how we're looking at the, at the tax rate. So if you go back to twenty-ten, our tax rate was at a dollar thirty-four. We kept that steady through twenty-sixteen, and we did the swap and drop in twenty-seventeen. And so our taxpayers are going to be able to enjoy that, the full swap and drop for at least three years. We're thinking that we would need to add a penny in twenty-twenty, and that we probably would need the, the two pennies for sure in twenty-twenty-one. And so this isn't something that, you know, we just dropped, and we're going to go right back up again. You know, if we can drop the rate in the future, we're going to drop the rate in the future, just like we did this past time, and our goal is to keep it, keep it as low as possible. So we do have another phase, and so you, you haven't seen this slide, but there's another color in here. We've added a blue to what some of the phase two could look like, and this is, this is with level principal. This is with no deferment if we had seven percent property value growth. So you can see, you know, we, we think that we would need to have as many as six pennies, okay, with, with seven percent growth, with, with no deferment. So you can see that. Again, I think, I'm not too nervous about the, being over the bars in those years because of our fund balance and some of the other strategies we have. But then if you look at what twenty-twenty-one could look like, if we just had five percent, you know, during those years, using some, you know, deferment of principal, you can see how we'd manage that. And so, you know, we, we do think that it's still prudent to, to plan on thirty-four pennies overall for the debt service rate through the, through the life of this total capital plan. But again, there's so many variables that are going to change, you know, by the time we're You know, by the time we're talking about twenty-twenty-one, you know, this, this graph's going to, I anticipate it looking very different. So we'll continue with our strategies to manage the debt service tax rate. Uh, you know, you're well aware of the commercial program, uh, commercial paper program. We anticipate bringing a board item in December to talk about expanding that flexibility from a hundred million to a hundred and fifty million, which would give us the ability to, um, again, take advantage of the lower end of yield curve, but also to combine new money transactions with refunding transactions, which would, which would be able to have us have larger transactions in the market and really grab the attention of, of the bigger investors. Uh, we'll continue with our re, bond refundings. Uh, we'll continue with the variable rate debt program, again, staying underneath the twenty-five percent. So you've, you've pretty much seen these, these tools that we have in our toolkit, and of course, we can, we can, uh, always utilize fund balance if we need to. So if we had a three penny increase, you know, using the, using the current values, uh, you know, because all the property value growth isn't necessarily from current, current growth, um, if you did just add three pennies to our current property values, um, then the monthly increase in taxes for our average taxpayer would be six dollars and thirty-eight cents, two point two seven percent change. And then one thing that, you know, we're just going to need to remind everybody, because this wasn't an issue when we had bond twenty-fourteen, and that's, you know, for our, for our citizens that are over sixty-five, that have, or the disabled, uh, folks that have filed for those exemptions, uh, their property taxes are capped, not just their appraised values, their property taxes are capped. And so if the tax rates increase, what they pay does not increase. And so, you know, so anyway, we'll just have to remind folks of that. That wasn't an issue in twenty-fourteen, because we were saying no tax rate increase, and so we haven't had any other kind of tax selection in the meantime, and so we'll just be reminding folks of that, to, just to, you know, encourage our citizens who, who may not have children in the system, uh, to, uh, to understand how the, the, the bond would impact them, um, because, you know, a, a potential failed bond or other problems with the district could hurt their property values in the future, you know, so we want to make sure that they, they understand the, uh, the implication of a, of a vote for the bond. So our next steps, um, so these are the, uh, the agenda items themselves, uh, for, for next week, for, for you to call the bond election. Uh, there's also the accountability, accountability resolution that I mentioned before. Uh, one of the, uh, we have all of the same language, uh, in that. Uh, we did modify that a little bit, though, to, to allow for the hybrid model of management. Before, it was just outside program management, and so now we're going to have the hybrid manage, uh, the hy, the hybrid model with Oscar and his team doing the, the bulk and then utilizing an outside company, you know, to assist with, with bond management. Also, the, uh, uh, last time, the, uh, the contingency, the contingency spending was restricted to, to buildings. We're suggesting that it be only for capital that's listed in the bond, for the categories that are listed in the bond, uh, but only with board approval. You know, so there will be no spending of contingency without, uh, board approval. And then the bond oversight resolution is, uh, the same as, uh, last time, where we'll be having the bond oversight committee, and that's been very successful. We've got a lot of new, new members on that. Some of them are here tonight, and they've been instrumental in helping us, uh, craft the recommendation you have. And then the joint election agreement, uh, that was, you know, put together by, uh, our internal council and looked at by bond council and working with the county, uh, so there's polling places in that. The polling places may change a bit between, uh, whenever this is adopted and, and the final, uh, uh, whenever the election is held, but, uh, it should be, you know, almost materially correct in terms of where the, where the stations will be. Uh, then we're going to be working to, you know, hiring architects in the meantime, and as Doc, uh, as, uh, Oscar mentioned earlier, we will be looking at the, bringing performance contracting, uh, solutions in the meantime, probably before November. So that is it. We'll be happy to address questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett and Mr. Perez. Do we have any questions? Mr. Rosenthal.
Jim had a question.
Sorry, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine, and thank you, Mr. Bassett and Mr. Perez, for a very excellent presentation. A lot of information to digest, but I just want to, I would, I would like to repeat a couple of things I heard you tell me, uh, Mr. Bassett, and that is, uh, in two thousand seventeen, we found a way to give the teachers a raise and lower taxes at the same time, and we did that by lowering the debt service or the INS tax rate four cents, and we increased the M and O tax rate two cents to take advantage of the two golden pennies. And that yielded eleven million dollars in state funding and seven million dollars in local funding, or eighteen million overall. That's sustainable, year in and year out. And looking at your chart, if anyone were to make a comment, well, they lowered the taxes just so that they could come back and pass a bond, that's really not accurate, because there was a specific purpose for that, and that was to give the teachers a raise, because at the end of the day, we're a school district, and our core business is to educate children. And our teachers are the ones who do that. They're on the front lines, so we've got to take care of our teachers, and we did that in twenty-seventeen. And we've given all of our citizens and, and all of our taxpayers the benefit of three years of that reduced tax rate, two cents per hundred. And then, I believe in the fourth year, if I, I'm going correctly, it might go up one penny before it went up the final three cents. So that's four years of tax relief that we've offered our citizens, and I would just like to remind everyone, that's possible because the debt service tax rate is not subject to the same clawback that the maintenance and operation tax rate is subject to, which is why we cannot afford to replace, to make wholesale replacements of windows and roofs and chillers and so forth out of the maintenance and operation budget. In fact, we have three months of savings in our fund balance. And that's a TEA requirement. It's not Jim Rice's requirement. It's a TEA requirement, and they govern every school district in the state. So, uh, we simply cannot, we simply must pass a bond in order to keep our buildings up to date. And you also point out that it's been, uh, over the years, for whatever, various reasons that I won't go into now, we have under, uh, we have under-invested in our, in our facilities. We've missed, uh, uh, at least one bond in, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fourteen, when, when Dr. Dupree passed the next one. Uh, and, and so this bond is needed. It's addressing both new growth and lifecycle deficiencies in educational adequacy, safety and security, technology, the fleet, all of those, those things. And, um, I would also, uh, like to point out that on your slide thirty-nine, well, first I'd like to go to slide thirty-four. And if I'm looking at that correctly, that shows the change in certified net taxable value in terms of a percentage. And if you look from nineteen ninety-six to, to twenty-eighteen, I can only count two years out of twenty-two where the net change in taxable val, value has fallen below two point five percent. Two years out of twenty-two years. And that would be two plus, and maybe three years out of twenty-two when it's fallen below four percent. And so people who would propose to put a cap on that, if we had had a cap back in nineteen ninety-six of four percent or even two and a half percent, I, I doubt that we'd have been able to pass any bonds, and we wouldn't have been able to maintain our facilities and keep the lights on and everything else. So, I mean, I think this chart is very, very, uh, very good illustration of how all of that has transpired over the last twenty-two years, and then slide... Let me get to it, thirty-nine. Now, Mr. Bassett, is it my understanding that we currently have a standard and poor's double-A-plus bond rating?
Yes, sir.
How many school districts in the state do you think have a bond rating that good?
I don't know the number, but I mean, most of our peer districts don't, and most of them are double-A.
And we're double-A-plus.
And we're double-A-plus. Houston ISD's at triple-A, just because of their...
Yeah. I always wanted to get an A-plus in school, but I was, I was settled for an A, but double-A-plus is pretty good. And it's because we have these strategies in place to manage our debt, our commercial paper program, refunding of bonds, the variable rate, debt program. And I, I think your slide is saying, for variable rate, we, we really don't want to exceed more than twenty-five percent of the total, uh, indebtedness, and we're only at eighteen percent. So, uh, I'd say we've done a pretty darn good job of managing the debt, and of course, all your slides really, really highlight that. And I'd just like to thank you, and also you, Mr. Perez, for all of the work that you have put into this, and also, uh, Ms. Martinez, too, going back to the beginning of this year, and, uh, all of the effort, the hard work, the heavy lifting, the double-checking of numbers and, uh, attributes and so forth that have led up to this. And, uh, I'm just really very impressed with your work and want to say thank you.
No, sir, we appreciate that. I mean, we've had a lot of help, uh, from folks in this room, staff members, and also, you know, we do have our bond council here, Jonathan, he's helped us, and of course, Raoul, uh, Viasenior, uh, he's helped us, our financial advisor, you know. So I always kind of talk about Raoul as the man behind the curtain when it comes to, uh, to debt service, but he really has helped us as well as the, the whole team. Thank you.
We know him well.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, Oscar, on, um, page nineteen, where you go through your square footage costs, um, my concern is that the high school cost is less than the lowest, uh, high school that you used for your comparisons. Could you comment why you, not that I want the cost to go above a hundred and seventy-eight million, but, um, I want us to be realistic.
Yes, sir. The, uh, once again, we, we feel very comfortable with the costs that we have, but our neighbors are building, uh, auditoriums within their high schools. They're building three gyms. There's just a lot of, of different things that, that we're, we're not, uh, building in the new high school. Uh, we, we definitely are, it is growing from, uh, what we did in Ridge Point, but it's not to the level of some of our neighbors.
Okay, so it's not, as somebody put earlier today, it's not going to be lined with silver and gold and that kind of stuff, so...
No, sir.
Like, like our neighbors do. Okay, good. Okay. And then, um, on your facilities maintenance costs on page thirty, what, what goes into that cost?
So, um, uh, function fifty-one, um, so the custodial costs, uh, but then also all the, the maintenance, the cost for the maintenance crews and the work that they do, parts, and if they're going to go in and fix, just fix something, plumbing, um, I, I mean, all of, all of those kinds of trades, all of that work goes into function fifty-one.
Okay, so it is everyday cost, so everybody else would have similar costs each district, but, you know, because of all the other issues that we're having with some of the older schools and whatnot, then it, it costs us more.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, Mrs. Helliger.
Oh, thank you, thank you for a good presentation. I just had one question around the contingency. I think that one got my eyebrows going up a little bit, that we've, we're only putting, is it five million dollars for contingency? I kind of wanted to check to see maybe what comparison to our current bond for twenty-fourteen, what percentage of the, the bond do we currently have that we're utilizing or, or having a contingency for twenty-fourteen? Because I just, I do think it's, it's pretty low for a bond that size, so I just kind of wanted to understand the rationale a little, a little bit further.
Yes, ma'am. So twenty-fourteen actually had zero, so there was, there was no, uh, program contingency within the bond. So the, uh, program contingency that we have to date, we had to build, build up as we went ahead and bid projects and, and completed, and we felt we could release money and put it into program. That, that's how that it was built, uh, built up, I, I believe to, I, I believe it got a little over sixteen million, and we're, we're somewhere in about fifteen million right now, and then by the time it's all over with, you know, the, the different, uh, hiccups that we've had along the way, you know, that's going to come down, you know, so it, it won't stay at that fifteen million, but we've been able to build it up to cover some of these unforeseen's. Um, one of the other things is that twenty-fourteen, uh, not, I'm in no way trying to say that it was not budgeted correctly, but there were some changes that were made midstream that, um, affected our budgets. And so even with those changes, we were still able to go ahead and, and build, um, a contingent, a program contingency. I feel that, that our budgets here are appropriate, they're, they're right-sized, um, and with the fact that this is a, a three-year bond and we're, we're not looking at having escalation out four or five years, I, you know, yes, would I like more? Sure, I, I, I would take it any day, but, uh, you know, five, five million, I, I feel comfortable with.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I guess, without knowing the detail of, I think I remember some conversation that where we released money and put into contingency, so we built the sixty, sixty million dollars worth of contingency in our twenty-fourteen bond. And so with us starting at a base of, of five million dollars, we're thinking that if we need it, we're going to have, A, either we're going to have, I guess, some flexibility in, in our current projections to build up this contingency. To me, that's not being right-sized, that's, that's, that means we have a lot of, um, some padding there. Or are we saying that our bids right now are more accurate, and so this five million dollars really is more or less around, um, hiccups and mistakes and those kind of things?
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that, um, our estimates that we're carrying, um, I feel comfortable with. They, you know, as, as I said before, not being here when it was first set up, we, we did have some changes on the way. We, the, um, uh, elementary ad spec grew, so, so we had some projects that came in, uh, you know, over, then we had, you know, some that came in, uh, under. We were able to go ahead and, uh, also control, uh, change orders as, as much as possible. So, because each, each project, I, I want, let me clarify, each project has its own contingency built in, so the, the five, the five million is above and beyond. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay, well, that, that really answers my question. You've already kind of built in the contingency within the project.
Let me just also say something, uh, because, I mean, I was here when, when the numbers were put together. Uh, initially, whenever we were going through the contracting, we didn't have nearly as many bidders, you know, for, for our contracts. You know, if you go out, you know, try to build an elementary school and you have two bidders, that makes it tough. And so, uh, things have gotten better, uh, because I think we're a better customer, and, um, you know, I mean, just, I'm just being frank, we're a better customer than we've been in the past, and so, uh, had things change, you know, business-wise in, in the climate, and so we're getting, we're getting more bidders, and then that just helps us drive the, drive the numbers down. And so I, I do think that, uh, uh, we had to account for that whenever those original numbers were put together in twenty-fourteen. And so, uh, I do think that what, uh, what we've put together, you know, if you look at those, uh, uh, the cost per square footage and, uh, the, the, uh, escalations that are in place, because there's not a lot, but there is some, uh, you know, I do think we're, we're, we're in good shape.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Helliger, Mrs. James.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Burdine, and yeah, I, I, uh, Ms. Helliger, thank you for asking those questions about the contingency, and, uh, right, we don't want to have extra fluff built into, extra padding built in, but it is prudent to have a certain amount of contingency, and so you've, um, I think that's accurate, that in two thousand and fourteen, those were individually assigned to projects, and so that's kind of where that was built in. But I also want to point out that there, we did end up having a couple of projects that were not done, and so then that money was, a couple of additions and things, and that money was moved into, um, the program contingency, so maybe artificially, um, um, padded the number a little bit in the sense of how, how it turned out. So I, I, I'm fine with the five percent, five million dollars. I don't think that's, it's certainly not a, um, it's not a remarkable sum, I guess, in what we're, in what we're talking about. I also want to, uh, just ask a question on page, on slide thirteen, the safety and security, um, list, um, and I will want to go and look at this a little bit more detail, and, and I know there's some survey information and things, but I wanted to ask, um, Chief, was there any consideration on the, whatever is in the Phase Two items of moving that into Phase One? Was there any conversation about that? Is it something that, it just doesn't seem like that much money, and in economies of scale, sometimes it's less expensive to do, you know, things at once, so I wondered if that was considered at all?
Well, it, it, yes, ma'am, it, it was considered, um, and, um, you know, again, with a three-year bond, you know, we have to escalate, um, we, we have to, we have to build our projects and our implementation, uh, in, in that window, and so... And so we want to make sure that we don't over-commit to something, and then we can't finish a project when we tell the public we're gonna do it on time. So, um, we, so we broke down what we thought was feasible for phase one bond, and then what we would project out in phase two. Now, things in three years may change, uh, but that's where we see ourselves going right now.
Okay, so thank you, that's a good clarification. So we're, we're building this, you know, partially based on schedule, what we can actually execute, um, and, and do and, and on time. In other words, to say what we're gonna do. And I think rather than choosing, um, I guess, uh, I don't want folks to think that we're choosing not to be safe. You know, we're, we're delaying things, uh, when you look at the six million dollars, and it's really not that much money, but it's more of a scheduling thing.
Well, it's not, and, and don't forget that in the twenty fourteen bond, we had twenty-eight million in safety and security. So we've been working on installing that infrastructure, um, putting the vestibules in place, putting the cameras in place, putting window film in place, putting, uh, card access in place, video intercoms, and the list goes on. So we invested a lot in the last four years and put a lot of projects in place, a lot of infrastructure that allows us to do some of the things that are on this list now, uh, where a lot of districts are just starting at square one where we were four years ago. So I feel really good about where we're at, uh, right now, and the fact that we're able to look at some of these, uh, options that weren't, weren't a thought four years ago.
Absolutely, and I think we accomplished more than we thought we would be able to accomplish in that, in, in the last, uh, four years. So thank you for your hard work on that, and to the team. I had one other question that struck me, uh, Mr. Perez, on slide six, when you, we look at the breakdown between phase one and phase two. So when I compared that, and I'm not sure what the other slide number was that talked about the build, Mr. Bassett talked about the build-out. And when we look out ten years from now, we expect, um, our district to be built out, which we would then, I might be able to translate that into something of our population plateauing. Um, and it looked to me, and I, and I guess I'm just, uh, I don't have a real firm question, but I'm just bringing this up to ponder, just so you know what I'm thinking. I wonder about the, the, um, need for new construction out in that two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five type year. Are we really gonna need that if we're looking at our population plateauing? And so I brought this up a couple of different times, but I'm just, um, and I know that's not something we need to worry about tonight, because it's the future. But I'm just thinking about that, because I don't want to get, there's a balance. When we have these new facilities, then we have to operate them. And so I don't want to get too far ahead, uh, thinking, I, I don't want to get the cart too far ahead of the horse, I guess, is what I'm saying. So, um, it just struck me that, I don't know what that number is made up of, but it just struck me that maybe we need to be careful not to be building too much too late. So I guess that's a comment, more than a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Um, I wanted to make a few comments. Mr. Rosenthal alluded to this earlier, that, uh, we are extremely conservative on our school designs. Some of the input that I've gotten from other community members was that we could educate our students inside of simple brick walls and do it like we did twenty or thirty years ago. Um, I know from personal experience with my son, it doesn't work that way. Children learn differently these days, and I encourage anyone who thinks that we have, um, elaborate designs to go visit other school districts, because we're far from that. And I wanted to really drive that home. And I also wanted to thank all of the staff members involved in creating this, because I know there's a lot of work, a lot of consideration, and it's been months in the making. And, uh, as a board, we appreciate the hard work, and we thank you for being thorough. And, um, I am, uh, I wanted to also make the comment that in regards to safety and security, um, Chief, as we approve the safety and security plan, some of these numbers may change slightly, is that correct?
Well, so the numbers that, that you've been given are the bond-related numbers, and we've really been focusing the last two weeks on those, because that's, that's what's the most pressing right now. Um, I don't think those are gonna change much. Uh, that's, those are pretty good estimates on, uh, in my conversations with design and construction and, um, uh, technology, and I, I think those are gonna stay the same. What, what we'll start working on now are the implementation plans for the other, uh, items once, once, um, I present that to you all, uh, next week.
Thank you very much. Next, six A, one B is the bond oversight committee resolution.
Mr. President, Steve kind of alluded to that, so we thought the board might want to discuss, um, these two resolutions, if you have questions or comments.
Sure, um, Mr. Rosenthal or Mrs. James, who would like to start that off? The bond resolution, would you just like to do a quick overview of, of these two, um?
Well, I don't really have a quick overview, but I do know Mr. Bassett did, um, reference it. I'm looking at the second one of those, well, I'm not sure actually which one I'm looking at, um, because they're both titled board resolution. Uh, oh, the first one, I guess, is just about having a bond oversight committee, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, I'm looking at the second one. And, well, first on, I am in favor of having a bond oversight committee, I think that's provided value. Uh, and then second, on the second one, you alluded to some changes. So I'm looking at the, uh, be it resolved sections. Number one was the changing a little bit the, the, um, relationship between the construction manager and the owner, right?
Right.
Construction manager, agent and the owner. Okay, uh, putting in here about doing audits following any contract that happened to be, um, construction manager at risk. And I think that was in the last one, wasn't it?
Yes.
And then the one I'm really wondering about is D, which is on page twenty of our board book. What is the changes that are in that from, um, well, C is the weighted average maturity, which we've talked about a couple of times.
Right, and that's the same language as before.
Right, and so D is what I'm wondering, what has changed, what is different?
Uh, okay, I'm trying to see, so, okay, so it's the, it's, it's actually the, uh, whereas paragraph starting on page, at the bottom of page nineteen. And so what, uh, what that's doing at the, at the, going into the very top of page twenty, where it talks about the, uh, for any capital purpose approved by the board such as testament of safety and security, improvements to the district technology infrastructure, and purchases of school buses. Those are items that are in the overall bond plan, you know, that we, that we just kind of finished reviewing. Those categories were precluded from contingency spending in the, uh, uh, the bond twenty fourteen resolution.
So safety and security, technology and school buses were not in the, um?
In the resolution, that's right.
Resolution in twenty fourteen, so we're including that now in the twenty.
Right, and the purpose is to just give the board maximum flexibility in the future with, with just, uh, to being able to spend funds how they feel that are needed. But again, these are only capital funds. I mean, these are only capital projects. I mean, we, we wouldn't spend this on salaries or, I mean, anything like that, it would just be capital.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James, Mr. Rosenthal.
So I, I think I have the same question. So, um, is this basically the same resolution that we had last time?
It's the same, except for being able to have the hybrid management.
Right.
Okay, and then also what I just went over on how contingency can be spent and what it can be spent on. It can only be done on capital-related items, but all within the categories of, of this bond plan, and only with board approval. The board approval part's obviously the same, but in the last one, it was only fixed just on buildings and land acquisition, that was all. And so, uh, the bond twenty fourteen contingency, going with that last, that last resolution, we could not spend that on school buses or technology or safety and security. We, it could only be spent on buildings. And that's, and so we're just trying to make sure we have full flexibility with, uh, the, the capital plan.
I guess, so this was something that, I guess, I had kind of put in, you know, I wanted to put in last time.
Sure.
Right, so.